Five thirty P M, but I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask you please rise with the invocation and pledge of allegiance from the Honorable Ms. Mary McKenna.
Heavenly Father, it is us again that comes to you, like I said before, the meeting before day late and hours short, but we honor and we remember those who have fallen to keep us free and to keep us safe. We ask your special blessing on their families as they continue to live day by day without their loved ones. Be with them, protect them, keep them safe, wrap them with your love. We ask you today to be with us as we make decisions for you and with our citizens in mind. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Ms. McKenna. We will now move on to item three A. Motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article eight point one two zero zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas have been met in relation to all minutes and pending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda, and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion? Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna, Mr. Childs, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Burge, Mr. Chandler, Ms. Salter. Okay, motion passes on to item four, citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker, and your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. At this time, there are no names on our list. Is there anyone else who would like to address council? Okay, if not, then we will move and close citizen comments. We will move over to item five A, city announcements and city events. Ms. Manasco.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a lot. So today, we started registration for the summer reading program. And our Scholastic Book Fair is going to run for three weeks through June fourteenth, and it started today as well. Our actual programs start next week. We have an adult program that has a summer reading challenge, and then we have three activities, the June twenty first, June seventeenth, and July first. And then our big program, our elementary and Read to Me, they start next week on Wednesday, and they run through July sixteenth. The Read to Me is birth through kindergarten, ten forty-five to eleven fifteen, and elementary is first through fifth, from ten thirty to eleven thirty. Getting out just in time to go to the pavilion and have lunch. That program wraps up on July sixteenth with our library carnival. Then on Tuesday evenings, we have middle school from five thirty to six forty-five, and Thursdays, we have high school, same times. And then we have two events that are family, friends, family, however you want to do it. Mini golf Saturday, July the twelfth, from eleven to three. And then our escape room opens July eighteenth. The booking starts July the third, and we do that by reservation. And then, of course, our year-round programs, Cookies and Coloring, that's for adults, continues on Thursdays from eleven thirty to two. And then our family game night on Thursday evenings, four to six forty-five. And we have all kinds of games, so you can come and play, make a new friend, or bring your family, or...
Thank you so much, Ms. Manasco. Thank you for all that y'all do at the library. That's a lot of events, and when people say, "I don't know what to do with my kids," just come to the library and hold on, hold on tight. Yes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The Explore Orange team hosts the picnic at the pavilion every Wednesday from eleven A M. to two P M. At the riverfront Boardwalk and Pavilion in downtown Orange, just down the road here, and it features a rotating lineup of food trucks each week. But due to the thunderstorm and the forecast and out of consideration for our vendors and guests, the picnic for the pavilion for tomorrow, Wednesday, May twenty-eighth, has been canceled. And weather permitting, we look forward to seeing everyone for lunch on Wednesday, June fourth of next week. And like Brenna said, that'll be just in time for the summer reading program, so we hope to see a lot of kids out there and having fun eating lunch, because it goes, starts at eleven and then get out at eleven thirty, so we're looking forward to that. And we encourage everyone to follow the Explore Orange social media pages or visit the CBB website to stay up to date with the weekly food truck line.
All right, thank you. All right, we will now move on to item six. Thank you to city staff for all the things that y'all put together for this community. It's greatly appreciated. On to item six, proclamation Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month. Whereas proclamation, Office of the Mayor, whereas today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling on the roads of our country, and whereas motorcyclists are roughly unprotected and much more likely to be injured or killed in a crash than other vehicle drivers, and whereas campaigns have helped inform riders and motorists alike on motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related risks, injuries, and most of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety, and whereas it is the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcyclists, regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling the highways of this country and safely share the road with motorcycles, and whereas urging all of our communities to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle and give the operator the respect on the road they deserve. Now therefore, I Larry Spears Junior, Mayor of the City of Orange, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty twenty-five as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month in the City of Orange, and urge all citizens to join in, encouraging the entire community to become more aware of motorcyclists and share the road. Congratulations. I don't think anyone's here today, but we definitely want to do our best to keep them safe. Okay, we will move on to item seven A, presentation for the project entitled Western Expansion of Water and Sewer Services to address utility capacities in the western and southern sections of the city, including Chemical Row. Mr. Adam Jack.
Good evening, Council. I'm bringing this presentation to you as a result of procuring professional services. From Schaumburg and Polk, we have some representatives from them here through a competitive professional procurement to provide study and engineering to expand our water and sewer services to the western side of the city. Just a quick economic history of Orange and Orange County. We started with sawmills back in the early eighteen hundreds. We saw steel shipbuilding in the forties. And then in the late forties, Chemical Row started within the area, and then in nineteen fifty-three, with the implementation of Interstate Ten, we expanded even further. Obviously, being right next to the river, that expansion continued through those years to work its way westerly. And where we are now is the bulk of expansion within the city itself occurs primarily in the western portion of the city. Therefore, in a long-range effort, we are going to start an engineering study and an engineering design to evaluate the water and sewer demands of the western side of the city and determine how we can bring that into the twenty-first century with G I, what they call G I S, Geospatial Information System modeling, determine future requirements, design loops so that we have redundancy in our systems throughout the city so that we can expand those services to the western part of the city through master plan. There's some distinct advantages to doing this. First off, for private industry and development, replaces water plant services and sewer services that our friends on Chemical Row have to provide for themselves right now. Their domestic water, their domestic sewage, they have to handle themselves every day. As a result, they spend millions of dollars on that process when we could be providing those services to them. Improves fire support. Obviously, if we expand our water services out that way, we can expand our fire support out that way as well. And it adds capacity to the western side of the city, particularly west of MacArthur Drive, as far north as M L K. As a utility provider of the city, it helps us in production and disposal. It helps us in delivery, being able to have redundancy in our systems. But more customers also means more revenue, and more revenue means we can invest that into the infrastructure that we have within the city. Suggesting improvements that we're looking at primarily are to run from the Cove over to the western side of the city along MacArthur or Edgar Brown in that region. A water main connection from the Cove across Adams Bayou down Chemical Row over to the western side of the city, and also a new water production plant in that side of the city as well. That would give us four water production plants, as well as a loop all the way around the city of a large diameter water main, which would give us redundancy for water quality, for water pressure, all those things. But also from the aspect of sewer, which is really, is limiting our development, our ability to expand right now. Right now, everything on the west side of the city comes into the Rose Lawn area and then crosses Adams Bayou and comes into the wastewater treatment plant. This proposal would extend a new line to the south along Chemical Row and allow us to move a good portion of those services into a new line, which would free capacity in the northern sections to allow us to do development in the northern portions of the city as well. Long, again, this is a long-term initiative. We're looking at taking several years to do. We'll start the study, then followed by engineering. Obviously, T C Q, Texas Commissional Environmental Quality, would like to see what we're doing and approve it. And then we can start working on construction of an eastern section and a western section. We've already applied for thirty-plus million dollars' worth of grants to help support this effort. That is the bulk of what I have for you, just F Y I of where we're going at in public works in regards to utilities, and I would be happy to entertain any questions that you have.
All right, any questions from council? Okay, any questions? If not, I will make a comment. I just want to thank you and staff for your due diligence, working with Mike, and they've actually, what Mr. Jack has not talked about is they've actually been meeting with all of the chemical plant leaders and speaking with them. This is a multifaceted project for us because not only does it allow us to have growth, but also allows us to be prepared for what potentially could happen on Chemical Road in the future with our industrial district agreements. So thank you for doing all of that. Thank you for working with them, and hopefully we can see this come to fruition. I appreciate it.
Our pleasure.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you, Mr. Jack. We will move to item eight A, Consent Agenda, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Orange Economic Development Corporation Meeting Minutes, May sixth, twenty twenty-five, Special Call Council Meeting Minutes, and also May thirteenth of twenty twenty-five, Regular City Council Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion? Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. Salter, Ms. McKenna, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Childs, Mr. Burge, Mr. Mortimer. Okay, motion passes on to item nine A. Consider a resolution approving an E D C Infrastructure Grant Agreement with Texas Vending Solutions located at sixty-nine ten North Highway eighty-seven, Orange, Texas, seven seven six three two, in an amount not to exceed seven thousand five hundred. The first reading was May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Ms. Grabit.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So we met the sixty-day waiting period prior to the first approval for the seven thousand five hundred dollars for Mr. Caleb Harris, who's the owner of Texas Vending Solutions. He plans to use the funding for infrastructure that leads up to his project, and his project is located just in front of the new Red Slicker Plaza that's located in Little Cypress, near the former spanning wheels. So I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, any questions or comments from Ms. Grabit? Okay, do I have a motion? Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna, Ms. Salter, Mr. Childs, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Burge. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Grabit. Very excited about local entrepreneurs. Item nine B, Consider a Resolution Awarding a Contract to Schaumburg and Polk in conjunction with the funding through the Texas Division of Emergency Management Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for D R dash four four eight five COVID-nineteen pandemic in an amount of fifty-three thousand three hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents for engineering services related to the removal and replacement of proposed generator and automatic transfer switch at the Armory Building. Ms. Floyd.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a project funded by grant money to remove and replace the proposed generator at the Armory Building. The city advertised an R F P for this project, and a panel selected Schaumburg and Polk as the most qualified firm to perform the engineering services for this project, and city staff recommends approval.
Okay, any questions or comments from Ms. Floyd? All right, do we have a motion? Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Childs, Ms. Salter, Ms. McKenna. Okay, motion passes. Very excited for this, Ms. Floyd. For those who may not know, we use this building for a lot of the things we use around the city, but it's also there in case of a hurricane. We've stayed in there for a little while. It's a little bit different, but there are rooms and there are showers, and hopefully, Lord help us, if we don't have to do it again. But it is a concrete building, and so this is a great thing in case we need it. All right, on to item nine C. Consider a resolution awarding a contract to Schaumburg and Polk in conjunction with the funding through the Texas Division of Emergency Management Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for D R dash four four eight five COVID-nineteen pandemic in an amount of one hundred and sixty thousand three hundred and twenty-five for engineering services related to the proposed relocating of the existing Link Street Water Plant Generator to the Richard Water Plant and the installation of a new generator at the Link Street Water Plant. Ms. Floyd.
Yes, so this is, this would be a project using the same grant funding, just instead it would be relocating the existing Link Street Water Plant Generator to Richard and installing a new generator to the Link Street Water Plant.
Okay, all right, any questions or comments? Okay, this is another great, huge deal for us, so infrastructure improvements are always amazing. Do I have a motion? We have a motion, second and a third. Ms. Salter, Ms. McKenna, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Childs, Mr. Burge, Mr. Mortimer. Okay, motion passes. On to item nine D, Consider a Resolution Awarding a Contract to Schaumburg and Polk in conjunction with the funding through the Texas Division of Emergency Management T D M Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for D R dash four four eight five COVID-nineteen pandemic in an amount of seventy-five thousand one hundred for engineering services related to the removal and replacement of proposed generator at the Police Department. Ms. Floyd.
Again, this is the same funding used to remove and replace the generator at the Police Department.
Okay, all right, another great move. Do we have any motion? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Burge, Mr. Childs, Mr. Chandler, Ms. McKenna, Ms. Salter. Okay, motion passes. I'm sure our officers and the chief will be excited about that. Item nine E, Consider a Resolution Awarding a Contract to Union Pacific Railroad for Preliminary Engineering Services Agreement to Replace the Wayside Horn System at U S ninety and Green Avenue, D O T seven six two three nine eight X in an amount of five thousand dollars. Ms. Floyd.
Yes, so this is an agreement between Orange and United Pacific Railroad to allow U P to inspect the Green Avenue Railroad crossing. Once inspection is complete and proposed work is accepted, Rio Tech can get the okay to begin the installation of the Wayside Horn System at that crossing.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Well, we have to get U P to inspect it first.
Give you any idea this year?
We gotta, well, we'll know maybe after we get the signature tonight, so more to come.
I would say that my folks in this district would be very glad to hear that this is coming.
Yes.
And that's kind of what I was alluding to, is like, okay, we're on a road, and like, yeah, okay, we'll go around it.
Okay, any questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Ms. McKenna, Ms. Salter, Mr. Childs, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Burge. Okay, thank you, Ms. Floyd. Also, on to item nine F. Consider a resolution to adopt a drought contingency plan to fulfill Texas Commission on Environmental Quality renewal requirements. Mr. Adam Jack.
Yes, every five years, the city is required by state regulation to pass a resolution by city council adopting formally the drought contingency plan that we have in case of emergencies. Last year, we made some minor modifications to drought contingency plan through serious public hearings in September, primarily to exclude landscaping and nurseries such as Shangri-La and professional nurseries from some of the water restrictions. In general, the basic phases are stage one is a mild sixty percent, we, we... Stage one is a mild shortage when we're down by sixty percent of the well capacity. It's voluntary water restrictions at that point in time with a goal of reducing usage by ten percent. Stage two is a moderate stage, mandatory water and washing restrictions in the city with a goal of fifteen percent reduction of use. And then lastly, stage three, severe, which to my knowledge, we've never reached. Mandatory commercial restrictions and a goal of twenty-five percent reduction in use. So staff recommends approval so that we can send a resolution to Texas Department of Environmental, Texas Commission on Environmental Quality so that they can go ahead and renew our standard process. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Jack, for breaking that down for us. Do we have any questions or comments for Mr. Jack?
Can you answer my question? We've never read stage three, which is a blessing.
We've come close.
We had stage two last year, and that was primarily because we had one well out of service completely, up in Meeks. Yeah, and that was the only reason we were in stage two, is because that well was completely out of service.
So we're going to build that redundancy, you talked about a few minutes ago.
That's it. All right, any, do I have a motion? Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. Salter, Ms. McKenna, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Childs, Mr. Burge, Mr. Mortimer. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Jack. Item nine G, Consider a Resolution to Update and Reaffirm Civil Rights Policies for the City of Orange as related to the Texas General Land Office Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Resilient Community Program under contract number twenty-three dash one sixty dash zero seven five dash F zero two zero. Ms. Zito.
Yes, Mayor. So it's been a while, maybe, it's been over a year, I know. We've applied for a grant to update and improve our city's comprehensive plan and update our building codes. Well, it was finally awarded, so now we're going through some of the requirements for the grant. This first one is to reaffirm our civil rights policy. It's just a thing we have to do for, we follow all of our civil rights policies, but we have to affirm it for the grant.
Okay, any questions or comments? If not, do I have a motion? Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Childs, Ms. Salter, Ms. McKenna. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Zito. Item nine I, Consider a Resolution of the City of Orange, Texas, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for grant administration services for the twenty twenty-two Resilient Communities Program, which is funded and administered through the Texas General Land Office, contract number twenty-three dash one sixty dash zero seven five dash F zero two zero. Ms. Zito.
You skipped H, so should...
I skipped one? I'm sorry. Nine H, Consider Resolution by the City Council of the City of Orange, Texas, Designating Authorized Signatories for Contractual Documents and Documents for Requesting Funds Pertaining to the Texas General Land Office Community Development Block Grant Mitigation, Contract Number twenty-three dash one six zero dash zero seven five dash F zero two zero. Ms. Zito.
Sorry, so this is the same grant I was telling you about, the Resilient Community Program Grant, and this is just to authorize users, signers for all the grant documents that come through, draws and what.
Okay, all right, any questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Burge, Mr. Childs, Mr. Chandler, Ms. McKenna, Ms. Salter. Okay, motion passes. Item nine I, One More Time. Consider Resolution of the City of Orange, Texas, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for grant administration services for the twenty twenty-two Resilient Communities Program, which is funded and administered through the Texas General Land Office, Contract Number twenty-three dash one sixty dash zero seven five F zero two zero. Ms. Zito.
So this is the same grant, and in twenty twenty-three, we did a R F P. We looked for a grant administrator for this grant, and it was awarded to Trailer and Associates, but we were holding off on the contract till we were awarded the grant. Now we're awarded the grant, so now we just need to execute the contract for grant administration.
All right, thank you, Ms. Zito, for the explanation. Do we have any questions or comments? And if not, do we have a motion? Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna, Ms. Salter, Mr. Childs, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Burge. Okay, motion passes. Okay, let me make sure I don't miss out. J, thank you. Nine, I'm so used to having the paper back in the days when I could scratch it out. Now, I can't scratch my iPad. Thank you, though, thank you. Nine J, Consider a Resolution Authorizing Construction Contractors for R F Q twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one to be placed on the pre-qualified list for the elevation of approximately eight homes under the T D M H M G P D R dash four three three two elevation program. Ms. Zito.
So it's a new grant.
This is a great one, yeah.
This one's been going on for years, and we're finally narrowing it down to the homes that qualify, the homeowners that are interested. So the homeowner gets to choose their own contractor, but the contractor has to be pre-qualified. So we did the R F Q, we got our list of pre-qualified contractors for them to choose from, and that's, this is for you to authorize those qualified contractors.
This has been a long, tedious process, so eight homes is really good for us. All right, do we have any questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion? Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. Salter, Ms. McKenna, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Childs, Mr. Burge, Mr. Mortimer. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Zito. Okay, on to item ten A, Consider a Motion Awarding the Bids for Demolition and Removal of Substandard Structures as Follows. Twenty-six fifteen Eighth Street to Caesar Landscaping and Construction for twenty-nine ninety-nine and ninety-nine cents. Twenty-seven oh two Eleventh Street Caesar Landscaping and Construction for three thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Fifteen oh two Curtis Avenue Caesar Landscaping and Construction, two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, ninety-nine cents. Twelve oh two Jayway Street Caesar Landscaping and Construction, four thousand two hundred. Six oh five Park Avenue Large Route, six thousand two hundred. Two thousand eight Park Avenue Caesar Landscaping and Construction, six thousand eight hundred. And Scott Street, nine oh two Scott Street Caesar Landscaping and Construction, two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, ninety-nine dollars. Mr. Knopf.
These are the lowest and best bids for seven structures that are to be demolished.
Okay, so once again, thank you, Mr. Knopf, in your group, and thank you to those who were involved in helping us get all these grants, and I believe this one came from the opioid settlement that we've been working on.
Part of this movie.
Yep, that's awesome. So thank you, Ms. Poole. Thank you, Ms. Williams, for helping us get free money from, which I guess we paid it already anyway, but we'll take it. Do we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Ms. McKenna, Ms. Salter, Mr. Childs, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Burge. Okay, motion passes. And I know the Stark Foundation will be happy about that one on Park Street, because it's right across from their entryway into Shangri-La, so thank you. All right, item ten B, Consider a Motion Appointing slash Reappointing Blank to the Library Advisory Board for a Partial Term Ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Ms. Manasco.
Good evening again. We have three applications, all three. They've been patrons a long time. They've volunteered at the library, and they've also served on the board before.
Okay, all right, do we have a motion for the first one? Sherry Combs, okay, we have a motion in a second. All right, Mr. Burge, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Childs, Ms. Salter, Ms. McKenna. Okay, motion passes. On to item ten C. Consider a Motion Appointing, Reappointing Blank to Library Advisory Board for a Term Ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. I guess we got three, and we've got three openings.
Yes.
Okay, so who's the next name?
I'm Terry Halliburton.
Okay, Terry Halliburton, do we have a second? Okay, we have a second and a third. Ms. Saltman, Ms. McKenna, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Childs, Mr. Burge, Mr. Mortimer. Okay, motion passes. This is the best board to apply for. We only got three. Consider a Motion Appointing, Reappointing Blank to the Library Advisory Board for a Term Ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Ms. Manasco.
Same.
Same.
Three applications, all good.
Who's got, who's got a motion? Who's the third name?
Jean Pierre.
Jean Pierre. Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Jean Pierre. Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Burge, Mr. Childs, Mr. Chandler, Ms. McKenna, Ms. Salter. Okay, motion passes. All right, thank you, Ms. Manasco. Consider a Motion Appointing Blank to the Convention and Viscous Bureau Advisory Board for a Two-Year Term Effective May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five through May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-seven. Yep. Oh, I have to recuse myself because my wife is actually one of these people, so let me let you know that I can't vote on this. There we go.
I was just waiting on you to announce my name.
Oh, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
Okay, but I recuse myself too. I'm still recusing myself too.
Mayor and Council, we currently have one vacancy on the C B B Advisory Board, and we did receive three applications. One from Sandra Holt, two Jerry Sautier, and three Tricia Spears. I'll turn it back over to you for your recommendation.
All right, do we have a name?
Motion, Agent Patricia Spears.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Okay, Mr. Burge, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Childs, Ms. Salter, Ms. McKenna, and I will not say a word. I gotta go home later. All right, thank you, Ms. Williams, I'm sorry. On to item, let's see, what's next, F. Consider Motion Accepting the Resignation of Becky Westmoreland from the Planning and Zoning Commission Effective May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. consider a motion accepting the resignation of Becky Westmoreland from the Planning and Zoning Commission effective May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five. Mr. Knopf.
Yes, Ms. Westmoreland, uh, served on the P and Z for several years, and she has resigned her position.
Okay, do we have a motion in a second? We have a motion in a second. Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Burge, Mr. Childs, Mr. Chandler, Ms. McKenna, Ms. Salter. Okay, motion passes. Onto item G, consider a motion accepting the resignation of George Mortimer from the Planning and Zoning Commission effective May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Mr. Knopf.
Uh, Mr. Mortimer served on the Planning and Zoning Commission for many years, and he, since his latching to the council, he's resigned from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay.
I'll recuse myself, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, there you go. I wouldn't want to vote against myself. Alright, can we have a motion in a second? Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna, Ms. Salter, Mr. Childs, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Mortimer. Can't, Mr. Burge. Okay, and before we go to that, I will say thank you, Mr. Mortimer, for serving for so long. It's been a pleasure. Now, we got you on to another team, so it's just, just moving around. Musical chairs. Alright, here we go. H, consider a motion appointing blank to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an unexpired term ending September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Mr. Knopf.
Uh, this is the vacancy as a result of Mr. Mortimer's resignation, and you have seven people who have applied for the job.
Okay.
Nominate Walden Smith.
Okay. We have, so we have, you said, who'd you say?
Walden.
Walden Smith. Can we have a motion in a second? Okay, Ms. McKenna. Okay, Ms. Salter, Mr. Childs, Mr. Chandler, okay, Mr. Mortimer, okay, Mr. Burge. Okay. Alright, motion passes four to two. Okay, so Walden Smith is on it. Alright, next we have consider a motion appointing blank to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an unexpired term ending September tenth, twenty-twenty-six. Mr. Knopf.
This is the vacancy as a result of Ms. Moreland's resignation from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Alright, who's our next name? Okay, we have a, uh, motion taken from Megan Lane, Ms. Salter, Ms. McKenna, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Childs, Mr. Burge, Mr. Mortimer. Okay, motion passes. Consider, uh, item ten J, consider a mo, thank you, Mr. Knopf, item ten J, consider a motion accepting the resignation of George Mortimer as a present, as a resident member of the Orange Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors effective May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Mr. Trahan.
Yeah, so, again, as a result of, uh, Mr. Mortimer, uh, formally being elected to the city council, it generates this action.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, recuse myself again, please.
Man, this is your second meeting, and you've had your name all over the agenda. I like that. As we know, you're the man. Alright, we have a motion in a, we have a, we have a motion? And a second, alright. Thank you, Mr. Burge, Mr. Uh, Mr. Burge, Mr. Childs, Mr. Chandler, Ms. McKenna, Ms. Salter. Okay, motion passes. Alright, item ten, uh, K, consider a motion appointing City of Orange resident blank to the Orange Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors for a specified period of May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five through September of twenty-twenty-six. Mr. Trahan.
Yeah, so there were two names that were submitted and vetted and formally approved for this position as a, uh... Okay, uh, if you don't mind, let me mention the two names first. They're, uh, Mr. Reggie Broussard and Ms. Caroline Henigan, and I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Broussard. Do I have a second? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Okay, Mr. Burge, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Childs, Mr. Sa, Ms. Salter. Okay, Ms. McKenna. Okay, so let me go back and count that. So, is that? Three and three, so I gotta vote on this again. Now, my question for that is, is Ms. Ms. Henigan told me before she stepped down that she did not want to be a part of this for a while.
She told us she did. And she actually put in an application.
Yes.
Okay, so here I am, I have to be the bad guy again. I, I'm serious, I'm not being, she told me that she did not want to do this for a while. So, I'm gonna have to go with Mr. Broussard. Okay, I did not know about that. Okay. Alright, moving on to item ten, um, L, consider a motion appointing City of Orange Councilmember blank to the Orange Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors for a specified period of May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five through September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. Mr. Trahan.
Yeah, so as a result of, uh, Councilmember Caroline Henigan not running again, it opens a position, and let me just state, uh, by position of mayor, mayor is always representing the council, and then the other council member that we currently have that represents you on the EDC board is Mary McKenna, who also serves as vice president of the board at this point in time. So, Mayor, I turn it back over to you, for all of you as a council, to determine who that third council member will be that will serve on the EDC board moving forward. So, Mayor, I'll turn it...
Okay, we have a motion in a second for George. Ms. McKenna. Okay, Ms. Ms. Salter, Mr. Childs, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Mortimer, you can vote for yourself. Okay, Mr. Burge.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, congratulations, Mr. Mortimer. Man, you've been all over it today. Alright, city manager report, Mr. Cooms. Alright, city council report, Ms. Salter.
Just get your kids out here, come and participate. It's a great thing. Our library, they offer so many wonderful things, and so please bring your children out. We got a great summer, and we want them to continue to learn while school is out.
Okay, Mr. Chandler.
I'll report.
Okay, Mr. Burge.
No report.
Okay, Mr. Mortimer.
No report.
Okay, Mr. Childs.
I see no flooding today.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yep, no flooding. Drainage people, they've been doing a good job. Ms. McKenna.
Happy Memorial Day, a day late and a dollar short to the honor of people who have died.
Okay. Um, I have a few things I want to say. Of course, Memorial Day, thankful for all those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Without them, we would not be here. I wanted to, uh, bring back and talk about the Bassmasters. I think it was awesome to have them in our community, definitely showed, uh, the world who Orange, Texas is. I had one person reach out to me, um, that said that there was over three million viewers at one time that were watching the Bassmasters on TV, so people got to see where the Sabine River in Orange, Texas was. Um, also want to thank the historical district for the work that they've been doing, um, the recent, um, uh, announcement of the, um, Wheeler Home and the dedication ceremony. I got a chance to be a part of that. I also want to talk about, um, I do want to s, send my sincerest condolences to the family of Mr. Tony Dallas, who was definitely a, a major part of our community for so many years. I was honored to be able to say a few words at his funeral, um, on Monday, and so we thank him for all that he and his family has, has done. And I do want to make one, um, announcement, or just to go ahead and get staff to look forward to this, in the City of Orange, we, we have a lot of special events that take place, whether it be by a group, nonprofit organization, a committee, an association. I would like for us to put together some type of, um, ordinance to where if, if a, any group, doesn't matter who it is, is wanting to put together an event that they need to come before council and have the full council's approval, when it's concerning our expenditures of taxpayer funds and having to go get police allotment, bringing in different things that are going to cost money, because what ha, what has happened is, uh, several times, somebody comes up with an event, then they call me or one of you, they want the city's support, and it's normally within the last seventy-two to forty-eight hours, and then this is a business. We cannot always jump through hoops to find officers and go find equipment, and then we have to expend, uh, money from the accounts at the last second, and I just don't want us to continue to operate in that way. There's nothing wrong with, if they have an event, make sure that they come, uh, thirty days before the event, so we can make sure that we have time to process it properly and to make sure that we're handling, handling our business properly, um, because we're having to jump through hoops at the last minute, and if we can't provide it, or if something goes wrong, then I look bad, or you look bad, because, uh, the mayor couldn't, didn't hook us up with this, or a council member, they said they were for us, and they didn't help us out. They need to handle their business, so we can handle ours. So, if we could set something like that up, that would be best moving forward. And with that being said, we will now adjourn to close executive session. Deliberation with city attorney. Liberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property is authorized by Texas Government Code, section five five one point zero seven two, regarding possible acquisition of approximately three acres of land along Chase Ridge Drive for the purpose of stormwater management. Also deliberation, consultation with city attorney regarding litigation and Stephen Culp and Catherine Culp individually and OBO, the estate of Jeremy Culp, deceased, plaintiffs versus Texas Department of Public Safety, and then City of Bridge City, City of Bridge City, Texas, City of Orange Police Department, City of Orange, Texas, City of West Orange Police Department, City of West Orange, Texas, Orange County Sheriff's Office, Orange County, Texas, Jeremiah Gunter and Brad Frye as defendants. At this time, you're able to hang out outside while we conduct, um, these ceremonies, and we will reconvene in open session one time. Thank you. At this time, we're having a hangout outside while we conduct, um, these ceremonies, and we will reconvene in open session one time. Thank you.